I'm going to call our city council meeting to order for February 5th, 2019. Would everybody please rise for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, I'd like to entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Schmidt and Councilmember Peterson tonight. They're both absent or sick.
I move to excuse Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Peterson.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you. Start off with council, oh, excuse me, any changes to the agenda additions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to council reports, and I'll start with Councilmember Dorsey, please.
Alright, all I really wanted to bring up is that next week, 13th and 14th, we're going to be at Action Days over in Olympia, and this will be my second time. First time I was very nervous about it, but I'm looking forward to learning some things and maybe some people there learning some things from us. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Nisco.
Okay, on the 23rd, I had a Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting, and then on the 30th, I had an EFI Employer Council meeting. We had a forum on the first with Christmas Village residents, three of us did. And I also went down to the Housing Behavioral Health briefing for the county commissioners. And next week, we're at the City Action, 13th and 14th, Association of Washington Cities.
Councilmember Prant?
Well, past couple of weeks, I've been attending council meetings, council study sessions, council staff briefings, and meeting with some citizens about different issues that are facing the city. I will again be with my fellow councilmen, council persons, to be involved with the Association of Washington Cities, Action Days in Olympia, it's an opportunity to meet with our legislators and to have that relationship and go down where they work and talk to them about issues that are important to us. I will just say as a little side note, I did something today, and I didn't know if it was going to be good or bad, but somebody called me and said, "We don't know who to call, but there's water spraying out of this building." And I went, "Well, I don't know who to call either," and so I don't have his phone number, so I said, "Okay, Craig Gregory." And so Donna, I called Donna, and Donna says, "Okay, I'll call Craig," and Craig ran down and found out that it was just a pump that was doing what it normally does, but if anybody sees something, you know, like that's out of the ordinary, it's always good to call the city, because one way or the other, you're going to, if you go through Donna, I guess, you're going to get to where it needs to go, and, you know, you did appreciate that it wasn't anything, but it could have been something. And so it was kind of a thought about it, I didn't know, should I call the police chief? And I said, "No, he's got things to do," you know, and our new city manager, you know, I really didn't have his number. I usually go through Donna on that one, and I knew Bob was probably out doing something, you know, so, but Craig, you were the guy, and you fixed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Say, two weeks ago, I attended the mayor's exchange, it was a week ago, with City Manager Knighton. Three council members, Councilmember Nisco, he mentioned it, Councilmember Schmidt, myself, Police Chief Moody, Councilmember, or excuse me, Public Works Director Gregory, and City Manager Knighton, went to Christmas Village to listen to the folks up there about the tiny homes proposal. This week, I will have a Mason County Housing Authority meeting tomorrow, and next week, we will, Deputy Mayor, myself, City Manager Knighton, and I think Police Chief, will be meeting with Abe Gardner on the Mason County OPO initiative and getting an update from Abe Gardner.
So, Councilmember McDown?
I had my CareNet board meeting last week, my briefing with Jeff, was involved with the Women's Republican Lunch last Friday. Saturday night, I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with what Love Inc. is, and it is churches get together and help people in the community in Mason County, Shelton, and so they had their fundraiser that night, so I attended that. I had my left board this morning, or this morning, and we'll be at Action Days next week, Wednesday and Thursday.
Thank you. Okay, now's the time where we open it up for general public comment, we limit it to three minutes. On topics relative to the city, when you come up, please identify yourself and let us know if you live in the city of Shelton or not. Donna?
Our first one is Robert Cheeseman.
Good evening, this is intimidating, being in front of adults, I'm usually in front of 30 or 40 students. My name is Robert Cheeseman, I live at Christmas Village. In the last week, I've learned a lot about homelessness. One in five suffer from on-treat schizophrenia or manic depression. Twenty-five percent of adults staying in shelters suffer from mental illness. Sixty-six percent of homeless deal with alcohol, drug abuse, or mental illness. Finally, the rate of violent crimes is 40 times higher and 27 times higher for non-violent crimes for the homeless. This is from a national survey of a site that tries to find master's degrees and colleges for these people trying to go into social work. These figures should be paramount with dealing with the homeless. I was curious about your council's core beliefs, and what I found was not surprising, but revealing. Not one word was given emphasizing the safety or welfare of the taxpaying public. More to the point, why were the 150 taxpaying citizens totally ignored at Christmas Village by even giving, going to the expense of having a plan made up even before involving the residents? The parcel representatives stated they didn't want to involve us, the public, until a lease was made. Where do they get off coming into our city and usurping our rights of self-determination? Was it for the promise of free money that you have opened us up for crimes we never experienced? And the dropping of our property values, the latter of which is nationally documented for single facilities, homeless facilities? It's documented. Pretend you are one half of the residents, roughly one half of the residents that are in Christmas Village, and for many of them, for the gallery, I need to put this because I heard this. How, so many of the people in that village are one step away from the nursing home or death. They're invalids, they're 75 to 90, some over 90, physically limited, and unable to defend themselves against desperate intruders. As the news is showing almost on a daily basis, many elderly don't survive when someone comes for the valuables or cars for an easy escape. And you want to place a potentially dangerous population, veterans are not, near us? That's unconscionable. Coyote Village in Olympia is a good place, it is an industrial zoning and void of any green space area for squatters to come in. The surplus, the term surplus property applied at your convenience to the forest that's around us already is a liability for consuming, for concealing the homeless. We've had to do multiple sweeps behind our village to clear squatters to reduce the thefts in our village. And you want to put your site within a half a mile of four public schools and 2,800 kids? It's not, it's bad enough that the highest concentration of pedophiles live within one mile of these schools. If you don't find a suitable place many blocks away from residents or schools like Coyote, don't do it. You have already put fear in the many of the elderly. I live near that watch and see what's happening in Seattle, Tacoma, Olympia. I live in one of the safest villages in Shelton, and wish that it continue. Our welfare is in your hands.
Thank you, Robert.
Don't blow it, thank you, sorry.
Mike Wardjohn?
Great, thanks, thanks, Council, for having me. I am Mike Wardjohn, I'm with Coyote Communities, and the testimony you've just heard is exactly what I've heard from many of the residents here in Shelton. And it occurs to me, as we reach out to this community, that I have never been involved with a project where there is a bigger chasm between the perception and the reality of the safety of the project. And I think that, you know, all of these concerns are extremely valid, and people's emotions are certainly need to be heard and acknowledged, but I will say in this case that this village that is being proposed is not a village of homeless people, it's a village of people that are living in houses that they're paying rent and working on their recovery. And really, I just, my goal over the next month or so is to really reach out to the community and help them understand how safe this really is. It's unfortunate that what's going on in downtown Olympia right now is clouding the perception of what this project is really all about. And, you know, we need, we need some assurance that the city is still on board. We need a lease so that we can move ahead with this public outreach that we really want to do. And I think that anybody that has a concern, that goes and visits the village in Olympia, will immediately come away with a totally different idea of what it is we're talking about. I think that, that the people that I've talked to that are in the veterans community are so excited about this because they see what veterans do when they get together and support each other. I would love to have this group of people in my neighborhood. It is going to be a very supportive and, you know, diligent about their recovery, diligent about seeing the success of their neighbors. We have lots and lots of data to support the idea that veterans, when given this opportunity, really shine and excel, probably above what you're going to see with a general population group of people that are living in this community. Now, keep in mind that the, the rent rate for these little houses is actually not that cheap when you think about if you've got two people renting a house for a thousand bucks a month. These are individuals renting a tiny home for probably in the neighborhood of 500, depending on what the HUD rate comes out at. They're paying market rate, so, you know, it's, they're going to be proud of their community, and they're going to be proud of the neighborhood they live in. And I think the neighbors, especially Christmas Village, who we've heard loud and clear, are going to be very glad two years from now, if I could just fast forward the clock, that we made this decision. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Jaycee Ostervor? Hi there, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, everyone here, for letting me speak. I don't want to be a broken record, I know I've spoken, and a lot of people from Coyote Communities have spoken about this specific topic, and we've been going on about this for, seems like, over a year now. But I just want to say that this project is such a great opportunity for this city to be able to help the homeless veterans in Mason County. It could be a huge impact on people, it will be 30 homes provided for homeless veterans. And 30 might not seem like a huge number, but it really is, and for each of those individuals, it's going to make a world of difference for them. And so I just come in front of the council and ask to please vote in support of this project. I have so many positive stories, if anyone wants to talk one-on-one with me or come visit. I am glad to take anyone on a tour, including people in the audience that would love to come see Coyote Village. We are basically replicating the model to be here, so what you see at Coyote is basically going to be what's going to be here in Shelton if you let us build the project here. I also have some flyers with me and a business card as well, if you would like to see any frequently asked questions or whatnot. I am more than happy, as well as my counterpart Amanda and Mike as well, and Tom Davis. If you want to talk one-on-one, I would just love to dispel all of the fears and concerns that people have, and I get it, those, everyone's fears and concerns and feelings are very valid, and it is far from reality in what we have experienced at Coyote, so I would just love to be able to talk one-on-one with anyone that would like to speak or has concerns about the village. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Gentry.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's it, alright. Thanks, thank to everyone who made comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as published.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we're going to move on to our business agenda, and I'm going to ask Donna, any items with public comment tonight? Okay, so our first item is, tonight is the contract update of 2019 comp, sewer comp plan, Public Works Director Gregory, please.
Thanks, Mayor, councilmembers. I bring forward to you tonight, in your packet, we did provide you with a draft contract for the sewer comp plan. We have a handout for you and also for the public of the, what we're proposing to be the actual contract that defines what the scope and budget are. Sorry for the handout, it was a little late getting, getting to us and getting finalized by the contractor. A few weeks ago, we did go out for an RFQ for these services and got two submittals, one from Gray and Osborne, one from Corolo Engineering, and after a panel of city staff scored those RFQs, we came out to determine that Gray and Osborne would be our best option for moving forward. And since then, we've had a small change that we will change or share with you later in the meeting that has changed basically from a sewer comp plan to include also a facilities plan to go along with this. And like I said, later in the meeting, I will share with you why we have adjusted that and included the facilities upgrade in the comp plan. But all in all, the budget for the sewer comp plan was budgeted in 2019 at $300,000, and what Task 1 is that you'll see in that sewer comp plan that is, came in at around $200,000, so well below budget. The Task 2 portion will be the facilities portion of the sewer comp plan. And like I said, we'll discuss later on in the meeting, funding for that. It did come in at around $120,000, but we'll share with you a little later on about a grant that we did receive that will cover all of that and some, also some planning and, and design moving forward with an overall sewer comp plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, it appears that we've done quite a bit of work with this company. Do you know how many projects that the Gray and Osborne Company has done with the city of Shelton in the past five or 10 years?
Not too many in the past five or 10 years. We have had a fairly good relationship with them here recently. They have done several design projects for us, Turner, the downtown connector project. They are also doing some consulting engineering without us having a PE on staff. They've done some consultant work for City Engineer Services also. They have been selected out of a two-submittal RFQ that went out for Railroad Avenue. We did select them for design of that overall project also, so they come with a very good resume for sewer comp plans. A lot of good things that they have done, they've actually worked with Department of Ecology on drafting what is called the Orange Book. It's really the sewer portion of Department of Ecology. They've got professionals that actually worked with Department of Ecology to develop certain chapters of that. And they also met the timeline that we gave in the RFQ. So the RFQ, this, this comp plan should be completed before it expires at the end of the year. Out of the two submittals that we did get, they were one, the one, that could meet that timeline, so their resume comes very well recommended to you.
Well, that was a short answer. So it has been quite beneficial to use a company that you have experience with dealing with, and it does make the projects go a lot smoother, you know, to use a company that knows the city, and so I'm sure it's beneficial to, to use that company. I mean, it helps. It's kind of like building a house, it's nice to know you use the same subcontractors and stuff, and projects seem to go along in a timely manner, so, yeah, I know, I just, I hear that name a lot, and I know we've, we've hired them to do a lot of stuff, so it sounds like they do a good job for the city of Shelton.
They are well qualified.
Yeah.
Evening. Kevin?
No.
Question, the original RFP was just for the, what would be the original sewer comp plan? Not including the facilities part of it, is that correct?
RFQ only stated the sewer comp plan, but this is a portion of the sewer comp plan. We did not state it in the RFQ, but we feel fully confident that it's not too far of a stretch to include the facilities plan also within the sewer comp plan, because it is a component of the overall sewer comp plan.
Okay. And that was something that you not planned originally?
That was something that we were waiting on, grant funding. We weren't quite sure if we were going to be awarded the grant funding that we put in for. We have been and have been updated on that, so that was the reason for the change. We saw a need to take a look at not only the collections area, but also our, our facilities that take in all of the sewer from the city of Shelton.
Yeah, and is that, I mean, six years is a requirement, correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Is a facility's part of that requirement?
It is not.
It is not, okay.
But we do, like I said, I'll share with you a little later on, the need for that.
Okay, thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
So, move ahead to our business, or our action item for next meeting? Okay, alright, thanks, Greg. Next, we're back to Director Gregory for an update on Basin 3.
So, Mayor and councilmembers, I am happy to report back to you. We are getting fairly close to the end of the sewer Basin 3 project. We're a little better than 80% complete with that project, with all of the main line installed. Basically, the only thing left in Schedule A, which is the actual pipe and infrastructure under the ground. The only thing we have left are the side laterals, not all of them, but a good portion of them that still need to be done. But fairly easy work, not a lot of, of things out there, it's fairly shallow, not a lot of obstructions. We are doing some lining of those, but we are well over 80% complete with that project. And with that being said, the grant funding that we had available to us through the four grants that we do have, one from Department of Ecology and the three direct appropriations, totaling just better than, well, just short of 6.34 million. Right now, it looks like through Schedule A, we are going to be about a million, about 1.2 million under budget on Schedule A alone, with all of the, what I can say would be really hard work of drafting the new, the new plan to go out. We had originally the design done by Parametrics, then it was looked at in-house several years ago by your city staff, and then the management of that, of that project has certainly saved us some money. We've been pretty lucky with the amount of laterals and side services that we thought we had to put in, but at this point, with Schedule A, we are looking at about a $1.2 million cost savings to the project. And with that, we have reached out to Department of Commerce, who we have the three direct appropriations with. Two of them with still some substantial funding left in two of the grants, the CD-18 grants that are in there. And we did provide you with a cost breakdown as a handout, and also the public with that, that shows the amount of funding that we've spent so far and the amount that will be left at the end in Schedule A. There is a Schedule B that addresses the paving portion of that project. So with that cost savings, what we are proposing is providing sidewalks and paved parking strips throughout that entire project. And with that, a requirement for the project is, if we do HMA or asphalt overlays, it is a requirement to bring up the ADA ramps to standards, to the ADA standards. But with doing that, we've got a lot of sidewalks out in that area that are non-compliant, and not only non-ADA compliant, they are outside of city design standards. So city design standards within the NR zone is a six-foot sidewalk. And right now, we've got mostly four-foot sidewalks out there, some five-foot sidewalks, which are fairly difficult to match up to. The other issue that we have is matching running slope. So ADA requirements are an 8% running slope, a 2% cross slope, which we do not meet really anywhere down in that area, and would be very difficult with elevations and other things actually developing ADA ramps in some of those intersections would be very difficult to match to the very poor at-grade sidewalks that we have now. And we've discussed at-grade sidewalks before, we discussed it quite a while ago with the Evergreen Safe Routes project that we had taken a look at. And with that, we get a lot of cars that just nose in and block off sidewalks, and it does not make for a walkable city or that area of the city. So we are proposing to move forward with design and construction of, what we provided you with was a map of the area, so not sidewalks in the entire area, but at least on Burt Street and on Laurel and all of the north-south numbered streets from First all the way to Eight. We did provide you with some pictures also of road conditions and sidewalk conditions out there. And right now, you'll see with the costs, projection and summary of the project. If we were to move forward with the additional work, it comes in at just over a million dollars, which would only leave us about $54,000 left in all of the grants, after we paid for staff time, some indirect cost that's eligible through the grants. But at this point, with still a small amount of work, but certainly not insignificant work out there left on the project, what we would ask for from the council is to have some contingency built into this and authorize the project to spend an additional $200,000 of city funds to move forward with this project, just to have a, a small contingency fund for cost overruns to move forward with this.
Where would that $200,000 come out of?
I had a fairly lengthy conversation with our finance director today, and we came up with likely it would come out of the 302 Capital Transportation Fund. It would be to connect basically the sidewalks that are in between those ADA ramps and, and the areas that we, we have to spend some additional funding on would likely come out of the 302 fund. And we certainly have capacity within that fund through TBD funds to get that completed.
Craig, that's basically if, if we have cost overruns, correct?
That's correct, there's, there's some things out there that we just, we just, without having a design, I just, I can't account for.
Right.
I spent quite a bit of time on this cost breakdown, just trying to figure in every possible thing we could figure in that we've spent and, and what we have in the future coming. But I mean, you're going to have things like, there's a section of Burt Street between Sixth and Seventh that's got a pretty good dip in it, and all of the houses on the south side of that road are lower than the road. So we're going to have to have some sort of transition between the sidewalk that's now going to be a curb gutter sidewalk, that's going to be elevated slightly from the roadway, matching up with those properties that are sitting down in that hole. So whether that be a set of steps, a block wall, whatever that might be, but we're going to have some of those things out there that we just can't plan for right now. I'm not saying that we're going to spend that $200,000, but I would hate to come back to, to the council in a few months and ask for additional funding when I'm telling you, I, I think we can get it done, but I would hate to tell you that and then have a cost overrun and have to come back and ask for additional funding for that project.
Well, I got to tell you, when I heard about this, I was just, I was just jumping with joy about being able to do more sidewalks down there. You know, I'm sure people understand that it has to be done within the boundaries of that project, so.
That's correct.
We're going to spend it down there, and I don't know, it's just, I think it's a great thing for our community. There's been a lot of good things happen this year, and this is one of them right here.
My question was, I guess you answered it, was, we can
My question was, I guess you answered it, was we cannot use this money for any other basins that are coming up?
That's correct. It would take a reappropriation. And at this point, likely we would be better off just asking for a full new appropriation for a project than trying to divert or, or redirect some of this money to another location.
And will we lose any street parking on any of these roads?
We're not proposing to, we're actually proposing to gain some.
Okay.
Right now, you've got gravel parking strips out in that area. We're proposing to pave all of the gravel parking strips on Birch and Laurel and most of the numbered north-south streets. So we should pick up some, if anything.
I guess to chime in, I, I, as being an ex-builder, it's hard. It, it, you look at neighborhoods, you say, well gee, can't we use these existing sidewalks? That thought, I think, you know, but you kind of explained it because, you know, they're all built at different codes and different levels and different times. It's best to just put them new and all, you know, you have to take those up and just make it all uniform, you know, I think probably pretty much, right?
And we have looked at this project extensively. There is a section on Fourth Street down around the Furwood Apartments, I think is what they're called, that is a, it has a curb gutter. It also has an eight-foot sidewalk on the, what would be the east side of that road. And we are proposing to keep that section of, of sidewalk. So anything out there that was up to city standards that we could match up to, it, it was, like I said, it's, it's behind a curb gutter. It's not an at-grade sidewalk. It's built to city standards at this point and also ADA standards. And it's in fairly good condition. There's one spot just on the north side of the block between Birch and Laurel that has some root damage to it. We would, we would basically just take up one panel to repair that. But yeah, looking at cost savings there and looking at the existing facilities that are out there, we would propose to keep a very small amount of those, but a few of those that do meet not only ADA standards, but also city standards.
I'm gonna again ask a question similar to Eric. We, we've had, we have some requests in currently in our legislative request for a critical project for Pump One and the gravity water line. There's just no way short of re-appropriating from the legislature these funds to use it for any other project area other than Basin, the current Basin Three project area.
Correct. This money, if we were to give it back, would go back into the, the larger pool and we would have to, just like anybody else, ask for another project. The reason we were able to, I guess just to clarify, the reason we were able to reappropriate what was a, one of these grants that we have for this sewer Basin Three project was a sewer project that was located in North Shelton, up at the interchange of Wallace Nealon and Olympic Highway North at one oh one. But that was again, another sewer project that had spent no money out of it. It had, it had no expenditures. And it was just, really, it was another reappropriation that we went through the process of actually diverting that to the sewer Basin Three project, which was much easier, like I said. And it was a full one point five million direct appropriation that was basically asked for again and moved. So it was something similar, but it didn't have any expenditures out of it. And it was a sewer-to-sewer project, basically close proximity. It really hadn't been utilized for a number of years that then just got moved. But it did, again, it ended up with a new direct appropriation number through Commerce. So it was basically new money, right back in the pool like we would have to do again.
Oh, continuing this other with people on pleasure. The, the fifty thousand dollars that you're projecting based on all the estimates, that's again assuming the current Basin Three project comes in on what we believe is left to go. There's no contingency added, included in that for any unforeseen things that might pop up?
There is a small contingency, yes.
Okay.
There's a ten percent contingency built into that also.
And we still have, we've not used, you're ten percent available right now?
I add it in because I do not want to short-change or, or come back to you and, and tell you that we had cost overruns. So I built in a ten percent contingency with what's left with sewer Basin Three for the actual Schedule A. So I've, I do have some contingency money built into that also. But with that being said, we find something underground, have to, you know, redirect or something. And, and like I stated, most of that work that is a higher risk for running into issues, the deeper mains, the, the manholes, the things like that, that part of the project is a hundred percent complete. All we're working on now is side laterals at this point. So we pretty much know what's out there. We have a really good count at this point on how many laterals are left and what the effort is to actually get those done. So I'm pretty confident in, in what we've got built into this. But yes, there is a, there is a ten percent contingency built into the actual construction finishing up on Schedule A. So that is about a hundred thousand dollars.
And Craig, this, the, the actual paving of this, the lift on the streets, this will not affect that at all? This is still the original Basin Three appropriation will cover the, the four-inch or whatever asphalt on this, on the streets, correct?
Correct, a two inch, two inch overlay on the paved streets. You do have quite a few streets out there that are now turned to gravel. They went, they went through with the sewer project and basically the, the, the original road that was out there was between fourteen and sixteen feet wide, very narrow road. But after they dug through what is an alligator road out there with a lot of, of cracking, basically the road disintegrated on them. And, and we've got quite a few blocks that are back to just gravel. Those will get a three-inch lift on those of asphalt also.
Under the original.
Under the Schedule B portion of the, of the Basin Three project. That's almost, almost a million dollars. It's about a nine hundred thousand dollar part of the contract under Schedule B.
Alright, so I'm hearing we have consensus move this ahead and come up with what you're estimating presented tonight, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you for answering the question.
You're welcome.
Next, you're back online for the stormwater utility rate study.
So again, a stormwater rate study was identified as a need going through the budget process for 2019. It was identified by our finance staff as something that was needed with the Phase Two stormwater permit that is coming this June and being handed down to us by the Department of Ecology, looking at the stormwater fund and, and needing to address some serious infrastructure and, and staffing levels that are going to come with that. So we originally provided you with a draft contract. Since then, we have gotten the actual amendment for the contract. And this is an amendment to the original rate study contract that we had for work late in 2017 into 2018 done by the FCS group. So we have provided you amendment number one to that contract that was awarded back then. And it does have a scope and budget to it. And the original budget amount for 2019 was fifty thousand. And FCS group came in with a proposal to finish that work at just over twenty-seven thousand, so well under, well under budget to get that effort completed.
Got it like that.
Questions or comments for Greg?
No.
Okay, move that forward to the action agenda for next meeting also. Okay, Community Development Mark Ziegler has, gonna speak about, to us about appointments to the city's Historic Board.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm bringing to you today a recommendation of three appointments to the Shelton Historic Preservation Board. As established by Municipal Code two point seven six, the Historic Preservation Board is responsible to identify and actively encourage conservation of the city's historic resources by initiating and maintaining a register of historic places and reviewing proposed changes to registered properties, raise community awareness of the city's history and historic resources, and to serve as the city's primary resource in matters of history, historic planning and preservation. This is a seven-member committee. We had three members that terms ended on December thirty-first, 2018. Those three members, including Forrest Cooper, Tristan Starr and Justin Celling, have expressed interest in re-upping for another three-year term each. And their letters of interest are included within this packet. And we would have one opening on the board at that point that we would advertise to the public and try to fill out the seven members with your approval of these three appointments. With council's concurrence, I'd ask that this is placed on the action agenda for February nineteenth meeting.
Okay, any discussion or questions for Mark?
I think it's vitally important to have a group like this in our city. I think that having volunteers being, wanting to step up and volunteer for another three-year term is commendable, and I think that we should approve these three individuals.
Okay, so move the three forward to the action agenda. Point next, next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. And back to you, Mark, to give information on the real estate broker services agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. As you're aware, the staff brought to you a revised policy, surplus real estate policy three hundred dash twenty-one late last year. They refined how we would market and deal with surplus properties. Within that policy, it requires the city to contract for real estate broker services. So the staff put out an RFP in November of 2018, the deadline of December twenty-eighth, 2018, to reply to that RFP. We advertised through MRC local rosters as well as local firms. I think there was five different firms that were approached to, to submit those RFPs. We received two proposals from brokerage firms. Staff reviewed those per the RFP's scoring criteria and is bringing to you today a recommendation to move forward with the contract for real estate broker services with Kidder Matthews as they were the highest ranking firm through the scoring process.
Questions for, comments from Mark?
What were some of the things that were on the scoring process?
So listen, in, in the, the criteria was demonstrated experience in providing real estate services for public agencies, quality and responsiveness of the proposal, the real estate commission rate, scope of work and tasks necessary with the appropriate activities and services to effectuate the real estate transaction goals sought by the city in a timely manner, expertise qualifications directly related experience of the broker assigned to the real estate transaction, any references that they would supply, demonstrated ability to perform quality work and meet time schedules, and ability to work and communicate effectively with public council members and city staff.
I'm surprised that out of the twenty years old real estate offices in Shelton and Mason County, we couldn't find somebody local to, to do business with that knows our city.
I did reach out to, to local realtors recently that did not supply RFPs. Got mixed results, some of them just didn't have brokers that were willing to work with the city. They felt like maybe there's bureaucracy and we didn't have any properties or a list of properties coming down the pike, I guess, that would, that would be, they'd see as, as consistent work, that maybe an open-ended broker services like this wasn't worth their time at this, at this juncture.
I guess if we're not under a time crunch, I feel that, you know, we've been talking for ten years, shop local, shop local, shop local. And to me, if you're gonna tell people to shop local and you as a city then don't shop local, it's, it's not a good thing. So I would probably not want to support hiring a firm out of Olympia to do this until we go back to the drawing board and maybe take a second look at it. I mean, that's kind of, you know, Amazon Prime's eating us up, destroying our small business, businesses through how convenient it is to do that. And I think shopping local is a very important concept. And I think that we need to take a second look at it. And that would be something, because I don't think we're under a big time crunch on this. So I just, I think I agree with Councilmember Onisco that we, we need to probably take a look at this a little bit and, and remember that we continually ask people to shop local. And so if we're not under a time crunch to do this, I don't think there's anything wrong with just re-looking at this one more time.
Is there, well first, is there a time crunch? I know, I know we've been working on this for a while. Is that, is that?
We've got one parcel that we declared surplus back in 2018. Be nice to get it off the books. Obviously, it's not, it's not of, it's not of importance, I guess, to do anything with it at this point. It's not costing us anything. We've got some enforcement activity on it. It's being, being used for parking. So we need, we need to do that anyway. But, but there's nothing pressing at this point that, of any properties that have been declared surplus that we need to list right away.
One of the notes I wrote down was maybe we could, you know, think about this and push it off till a later date. I, I, I don't expect a real later date, but, you know, we, we need to handle it sooner or later. But I was kind of surprised that we didn't have more people join in and bid on this.
Based on the responses I got back, I don't know, I don't know if pushing it down the road is gonna get more local responses.
Right.
You know, we did see one, one response locally from, from Shelton Broker and then the, the broker that, that is recommended today is from Olympia, based out of Olympia. They have brokerage offices throughout the Puget Sound area as well.
Okay. Was there, I have to ask, I did, was there any overriding on the scoring? Was there, I know on, on the, the sewer comp plan, one of them was the deadline. Because one of the contractors, the other contract couldn't, couldn't meet the get, our desired deadline. Was there any specific issue on the scoring?
I think there was two probably. One is demonstrate experience with public agencies. Kidder Matthews has worked with King County, Snoomish County, Thurston County, City of Olympia. Let's see, as well as City of Seattle. So they obviously have a breadth of experience within, within dealing with local governments. And then the commission rates. Kidder Matthews had a lower commission rate across the board.
Thanks, Mark. Well, what's the consensus?
I'd like to go back to the drawing board and relook.
Okay, well, let's.
Couple, couple weeks, maybe, I don't know, is that too long?
Delay and maybe.
We've been not with an active one for a few years or, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to take a look. I wouldn't mind looking at the, the actual people that apply, what they apply to. I haven't seen anything about what you presented and then how you scored the, you know, what you did. So I wouldn't mind taking a look at that, you know, the paperwork on that. So, you know, a little bit, so I don't know.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think what we can do is go back to, look at what our requirements are and maybe take a look at how those things were worded and how the contract and the RFP were structured. And we can bring something back to you probably a month from now, maybe toward the ends of, end of March, that will meet what your expectations are.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our business agenda. Moving to the action agenda, items for public?
No public.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Okay, our first action agenda is back to Mark to speak to us, speak to us about amended contract for the architectural services for the library.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is again amended contract for the architectural services for the repairs at William G. Reed Library. The contract that was executed in May of 2018 had expired at the end of eighteen. Within that contract, it stipulated that if, you know, if we needed services at nineteen or if the project wasn't complete, that we can amend the contract to complete those services in nineteen. So we're bringing it back to you today. The, as you see in your packet, the project is about sixty percent complete on design. Knowing that we haven't really been pushing on the arc. knowingly that we haven't really been pushing on the architect because it's kind of the, the off-season, and we know that our construction window's probably going to be May at best to tear a roof off of, off of the library and replace the roof and paint the exterior and do the, the necessary work on the deck. So, the architect has, has expressed their, their interest in that timeframe, and we certainly will have that design completed in March, so we'll be able to go to bid in, in the spring and be able to have a project move forward within that construction window. They've done a lot of discovery work, a lot of pre-planning, bid document formulation, and those types of things. Now, we're kind of going to get into the design, color selection, and things like that. We'll be working with the library, Timberland Regional Library staff and city staff to help, help determine how we move forward and get the final bid documents put together with the execution of this contract for 2019.
Okay.
Are you pretty comfortable that it's going to come close to that or maybe even under the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand?
We'll know more, we'll know more when the architects' estimates are put together. We had some, we had some fairly decent estimates and bids prior to this grant, this proposal or this LCP, the Local Community Programs Grant Request for the Direct Appropriation. We didn't have the architectural design, obviously, because we didn't know how much to invest prior to that LCP grant request, but we are getting some alternates within the bid project, so they're going to bid out alternate roofing materials and, and maybe some decking materials, so it'll give us some options to hopefully meet the goals of the project and fit within the budget that's been given to us.
Before we have further discussion, let's see if we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the professional service contract with Foster &amp; Williams for preparation of construction and bid documents for the repairs of William G. Reed Library.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Back to Councilmember Dow.
Okay. So, so do we have a cushion there in case it goes over that amount?
Nothing's been budgeted through the city's general fund for any additional projects or, or projects if this isn't enough money to.
So, you have to work hard for it, Mark.
We certainly do, yeah. We have to get into a good bid window, and having some alternates within the, the bid, bid specs will, will give us some flexibility as well.
Thank you.
Mark, I was, if I'm not mistaken, the repairs are for like roof, gutters, paint, exterior paint?
Correct.
Deck.
Is there maybe some siding or something I heard one time?
Yeah, there's some siding repair, soffit repair.
And then the deck is not a deck replacement, it's more like a deck, what?
Deck repair?
Stabilizing it.
Well, there's a membrane on the deck, so that's most likely replaced because there's been some water intrusion and some degradation in the structure underneath that membrane. So, we're talking about the deck membrane replacement, most likely the railing as well, replacement of that, but the structure, you know, itself is, is in good shape, so there's, there's a little bit of rot, a little bit of water infiltration that happened underneath that membrane, but not, not a significant amount of structural changes.
Yeah, I think a lot of people were thinking we were going to tear it down and build a new one, but.
No.
That, that, there's not enough money for that.
No, and we're working within the footprint of the existing deck.
So, Mark, do you anticipate when we put out the bid, there'll be a series of maybe two or three levels of?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're, they're assured you that they will have a proposal by end of March?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we will have that done.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve a professional services contract with Foster &amp; Williams for preparation of construction and bid documents for the repairs of the William G. Reed Library. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next up, City Manager Jeff Knight is going to give us information about the appointment of the city clerk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I wanted to speak with you a little bit about our city clerk's position. Council recruited for this, or the city recruited for this position back in November, and I am very grateful that the candidates had the patience in order to wait for me to get started here at the city. I did speak with the candidates immediately after I started, and after speaking with them and speaking with council and other members of the staff, it was very evident that the appropriate candidate is Donna Nolte, and I would like to recommend her for your consideration and approval this evening.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to accept Donna Nolte as our new city clerk.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Thank you, Donna, for, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I think that's a great move. She's the one I always call. Like I said, I don't have his number, and she always answers the phone, so I think she's, she's the best candidate we got there, so I'm looking forward to working, continuing to work with Donna, and she's a very, she's very much a professional, so.
I just wanted to thank Donna for all her hard work, and thank you for being there for us, and from trying times. It must have been hard for you as four new people.
Challenging, mostly challenging. Thank you for keeping us all calm through the transition. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want to say Donna kept me in line in Bordeaux, what, thirty years ago?
Quite a few years.
Quite a few years ago, and I appreciate you keeping me in line here, so I think we're all gladly in favor of this.
I appreciate everything she's done for me. She's actually been doing two jobs here for about a year now, and, you know, it was pretty rough at first, and we both came on about the same time, and, and, but somehow she kept it together and keeps me in line, I'll tell you that, so I really appreciate it.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Donna Nolte as a city clerk for the City of Shelton effective February fifth, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Donna. Okay. Next, City Manager Knight will talk about interlocal agreement with Mason County.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council and members of the public. This item was first heard at the council's January nineteenth meeting, and it is an interlocal agreement between the county and cities within the county, which for Mason County is just us. For the interlocal agreement with Mason County for the surcharge retained by a county shall be allocated to eligible housing activities that serve extremely low and very low income households within the county. That's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the agreement.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the interlocal agreement, excuse me, between Mason County and the City of Shelton for affordable housing and homeless services.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for, for Jeff? Councilmember Cron?
Well, I would just say that housing, like representative there, Mr. Denny Heck, has talked about on my TV, housing is one of the biggest challenges all cities are going to be faced with, and because of the cost of housing, and that I think anything we can do to work together to, to address this issue, because if we don't start addressing it sooner than later, we will find ourselves in bigger trouble than we are. Housing is very important for our citizens, and so I think this is a good step forward.
Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt the interlocal agreement between Mason County and the City of Shelton for affordable housing and homeless services. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next, back to Jeff for discussion on the LTAC grant recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC Committee, met in late November of 2018 and early January of this year to review tourism applications submitted for 2019. Total grant recommendations, as you see on the backside of your briefing sheet, are slightly over sixty thousand dollars, and again, this item was heard at our January nineteenth meeting, and no changes have occurred, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any funds left over? Because what, a year or two ago, they had a baseball tournament, and that was a last minute thing, and we had some funds for that.
I do believe there are some funds left over. I don't have that amount for you. Yeah, I can get that for you, though.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Can we have a motion, please?
I move to accept the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's grant recommendations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's grant recommendations. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay. Last action item is back to City Manager Knighton, agreement for municipal court security officer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the public. During the development of the 2019 budget that the council went through last year, there was an approved request for a court security officer. There was some concern about security within the court while court was in session, and to address that, we budgeted, or the council budgeted approximately fifteen thousand dollars for a court security officer for this year. We did issue a RFP or RFQ, one of those, to hire a consultant for court security officer. We have found a person that we would recommend for your approval, and the contract is included in your packet, and it hits the budget number that the council authorized exactly. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Make a motion first.
Make the motion.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
I have a question. It might be more for Chief Moody. Can we use a person like this to transport prisoners to others, other jails if we needed to?
If you're talking about Sergeant Heldrich, retired?
Yes.
Sergeant Heldrich retired from us this last year. Cities and counties can't enter into private contracts with companies or persons to transport. In this case, I don't know that that's in the contract currently. I don't believe so. It's just security within this building, so.
Yeah, I, I just thought maybe as well, maybe on the side, we could use him instead of taking an officer off the street to transport people to the squally or forks or.
If we wanted to look at something like that in the future, the city manager and I could sit down and map out what it would look like. Again, there are cities and counties that do contract through private agencies for transport only, and that's something we could definitely look at in the future if the council wanted to go that route.
Okay.
If that's something that the council would like us to look into, we'd happy, be happy to look at options with this gentleman or with other contracting firms as an option to present to council for your decision.
Would there have to be any further training for this gentleman to do something like that, transport?
I, as a.
Or if there's more than one or?
Yeah. As someone that's.
Okay, go ahead, Chief.
Go ahead, yeah.
I, for this particular contract and what you're looking at here, Sergeant Heldrich is more than qualified to do this, retired in good standing after many years with the police department. Everybody at that police department at some time has been security for this court, so he, he has at some time or another been in this court for security. Like I said, retired in good standing. I don't think he would necessarily need extra training, but like any position, I think it would be a good idea if he continues in the contract to provide him training as it moves forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want to confirm, because I asked you this before, about it was a competitive process?
It was.
And this sergeant, the retired sergeant just happened to be the best selection for several reasons. One of them was financial.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions for Jeff or for the chief?
In age, we need somebody.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract as presented. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Back to City Manager Knighton for his report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We are in the process of recruiting and selecting personnel for our Director of Financial Services. That position will close, well, not close, it'll have a first review on February eighteenth, and hopefully we get a strong pool of applicants. We've also concluded interviews for our HR manager position, and I expect to have some good news for all of you on that front shortly. Other than that, we're working on ongoing projects and continuing to do our best to make Shelton the best place it can be. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Anything else from the council, new items? Okay, seeing none. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February nineteenth at six P.M. We are adjourned.